Okay, so welcome to the Town of Rutland Special Select Board Meeting. This is to deal with the proposed municipal budgets for the 2021-2022 fiscal year. Today is November 16th, 2020. We have a full board and many town employees and department heads on, so we're going to get right to it. We have no minutes to approve at this meeting, no orders to sign. Is there anyone wishing to speak who is not on the agenda tonight? Okay, hearing none, we'll get right to it.
Josh, I have a question.
Go ahead, Joe.
Every year when we have this budget meeting, we discuss whether or not we're going to do an employee salary increase. Would it be a good idea if we discussed that first, so as we go through the budgets and there is items in there for employee salaries and stuff like that, we'll know what we're doing? Or do you want them to do them?
No, we certainly can, we certainly can start there. Do you want to start the conversation, Joe?
I don't know what the other board members, I know in the past we've done like a 3% increase. I don't know if anybody has any actual cost of living increase. I do know that this whole... Yes, go ahead.
Okay, the COLA is 1.3 this year, but I think we should go to 3%.
Okay, you know, and I'm all in favor of whatever everybody agrees. I just thought we ought to get it settled because it affects almost every budget. And so, once we have that, then we can make sure that that's figured into the necessary line item. So, I'm good with 3. I think that in these challenging times, we blame the virus on a lot of things, but the cost of living, I'm not sure really reflects the, what the virus has done to a lot of the stuff that people have to buy.
I agree.
So, I'm good with a 3.
If Sharon is making the motion for 3%, I'll second it, unless Joe wants to.
Nope, that's fine, I'm good.
Sharon, is that a motion?
Yeah, I make the motion to go to 3% COLA for everyone.
Alright, motion made by Sharon, is there a second? Mary?
Yeah, second.
Okay, for discussion, I do know that I think most committees use the standard 3% just to figure their budgets. You're right, Joe, we probably should have, I should have brought it up at an earlier meeting as to what we were going to do for budgetary purposes. I know we've done 3% over the last few fiscal years. It's sort of been our standard practice for our town employees.
No, it has not, it has not been a standard practice. The standard practice is to take the COLA and round up, and it's just coincidental that it happened to be. There is no standard practice of any percentage. The practice in the town is you take the COLA and you round up. But I agree, I agree. Well, no, I agree that it should be 3 this year because of the pandemic. I think that our employees have gone, you know, they are exposed. So, I do support the 3%, but I want to be clear that it's an exception, not the rule.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. So, it'll be a 3% raise for town employees for this proposed fiscal budget. Alright, thanks for getting that started, Joe. So, let's, unless someone objects, let's hold on to general for last, and we'll work through these department head reports, or department head proposed budgets. And why don't we get started here with recreation? Now, do all my colleagues have the worksheets that Bill had printed out for us?
I do.
I do.
John Paul?
Yeah.
Okay. So, we have for recreation a negative 0.23% proposed budget from last year. A total of $158,321. And that is an anticipated income of $30,000. The way it's proposed now would be to be raised by taxes of $128,321 to get you the total 158,321. Mike and John Paul and Sharon, you three created this budget. Would you like to walk through it or highlight any important features?
Well, I'd like to speak to it. Mike held the fruit to the fire and, you know, it's a decrease of 0.23, which I think is remarkable in these times. And I see no reason not to accept this budget because I think they did a great job.
John Paul, anything to add about the rec budget?
Nope.
Is there a motion to accept as presented?
I'll move.
Motion by Sharon, it was seconded by who?
Me, Joey.
Joey? For discussion?
Question?
Go ahead, Mary.
Well, it looks like the big decrease, $3,000 decrease is in maintenance, and that looks in line with what was actually spent the previous year. So, you're feeling that we don't need to budget that much for maintenance?
Mike Rowe?
You're muted, Mike.
I just shifted some money around. I wanted to keep it under, and I want to give it a try, see how it works. We should be fine.
Okay.
Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes.
Nice job to Mike Rowe and the Recreation Committee, thank you.
Thank you.
Let's go to the Rutland Town Fire Department budget. We have a proposed decrease of 1.26% to be raised by taxes as presented of $214,370. Myself and John Paul had met with the chief and assistant chiefs to discuss. And we felt, both myself and John Paul felt this was a great budget that they had proposed, and we appreciated them in light of the pandemic and so on, finding a little bit of savings here for the town taxpayers. Before I ask the chief or your assistant chiefs to discuss, to talk about it, did John Paul, did you have anything to add about the fire budget?
All set.
Thanks. Chief Clark, anything to add?
All set.
Larry or Mike?
I'm all set. I'm good if there's no questions.
Well, let's see if there's some questions. So, I'd open it up to Joe or Mary or Sharon, any questions or discussions on this present, presented budget?
The only question, Josh, did they figure in the 3% on like the salaries for the firemen and the administrative salary?
Yeah, that was, that was, that was figured in at a 3% increase, Joey.
Okay, so, so they've already gone that route. Alright, that's the only question I have, make sure it complies with what we just discussed. Thanks.
Mary, did you have a question?
Just checking, it looks like the big decrease in maintenance and equipment. Are we shortchanging anything by doing that?
We don't believe so. We don't believe so, most of that maintenance was for engine 3. Since it's leaving, we aren't going to put any money into it.
Okay, and then you said bump up in office supplies. Was it just time to stock up, was that what happened?
No, we got a fax machine slash copier like the town hall because ours died. So, we're going to try that route. And it's got a rental fee, I believe.
Does it also scan?
Yes, it does, Mary, it's a little bit different version of what we have at the office, but yes, it does, it does, it's an all-in-one for the, for the fire station.
Okay, good, thank you. No other questions?
Thanks, Mary. Sharon, did you have any questions?
No, I move to accept the fire budget.
Motion by Sharon, is there a second?
Second.
For discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you to the department leadership and John Paul, thanks for your help on that. Police budget next. Budget is looking at a increase of 4.77%. A little over, it looks like $20,000. Grants, anticipated income through grants of $99,140 to be raised by taxes of $356,826, which gets you to the 455,966.
That's the anticipated income change, remember you've got the other sheet that has the change in that?
Yeah, we, I can speak to that if you... So, the actual increase is, I think it's 2.88%. The major reason is because the anticipated income is increasing from 99,140 to 110. Did I get that right?
Yes.
Okay. There is a bump up in what the school is going to pay for the portion of school resource officer's position. In addition to salaries, they're also covering now some benefits and some cruiser time. Hence, the increase in the money coming in to cover that position and the decrease in the percentage increase. And I did check with, I talked a little with Lynette and I also checked with Sue on how the percentage increase was calculated, and it's calculated after all of the anticipated income from grants is included.
I have a question, Josh.
Go ahead.
Down on the bottom where it says benefits? If you look in that column, there's $4,000 there, can somebody tell me what that is?
No, I can tell you about that. Here, you want to do it?
Well, yeah. So, the benefits, actually, I think that it's an added line, and it shouldn't be the benefits line, it should be, have its own number. It is for the anticipated K-9 unit. That is the only expense anticipated for that because the rest of it will be proposed to be raised by fundraising.
Okay, so it's just a new line item that you guys didn't put in as a, with a number. I wasn't sure what it was, yeah, okay, thanks.
Let me do a quick walk through. Right after that, you see health insurance, that's one of the very large increases. And that is due to the fact that one of the employees went from, we had a change of employees, so one was getting a single health insurance policy and the other, the employee and his family.
Call from Mandicar TV.
I'm sorry, can you guys hear us? We have a little technical issue here in the office.
I still do.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, other changes, we no longer have a part-time officer because we increased our second officer's hours. The second officer and first officer being comparable positions had a pay increase, and that, that came about this fiscal year, and it's reflected continuing into the next fiscal year. And the part-time office staff, we discovered through, I think it was in the middle of last fiscal year, that we had been underpaying the hourly amount, and so we had to bump that, well, we needed to bump that up. And so, the proposed budget includes the higher rate of pay for the part-time office staff. The big decrease is the vehicle purchase lease line, which is two-thirds of the way down. That decreased from $19,000 down to $9,800. That's because we are paying off one of the, we have paid off one of the vehicles, and so, there's only one lease payment remaining on, one lease payment per month remaining on that. I move we approve the police budget as presented.
Second.
And as corrected.
Say that again, Mary?
But and as corrected.
Okay. Motion by Mary, seconded by Sharon. Questions from the board, John Paul, anything?
All set.
Joey?
Go ahead, thanks.
Just so I'm, just some clarification on the salary increase on the two full-time officers. That's largely because we're dissolving the part-time position with that savings of $17,900, and they are going to be picking up some of that responsibility.
Correct. I should note that the police budget sheet, I'm not, that Bill printed out differs from the budget, police budget sheet that Lynette sent me. And unless she did some changes that I'm not aware of, the anticipated grants income, as I mentioned, is $110,400. And the amount to be raised, and the amount to be raised by taxes then is $345,566 for a total budget of 455,966. And that's a, my calculation, 2.88% increase.
Yes, you're right, Mary, that did change. Ted, Ted and I corrected that this morning. So, for those of you that are on the video watching it, we do have the live budget sheets on the screen, and that shows the corrected, corrected number now.
Yeah, I see it, Bill, and alright, cool. Did, do we vote on that yet?
No.
No.
Any, any further discussion on the motion to approve the police budget? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. On to the Highway Department next. Thank you to Chief Dumas, Deputy Chief Washburn, and the Police Committee for your hard work on that budget.
Welcome.
Alright, let's look at Highway. Byron, are you there still?
Down here.
We're looking at a, as presented, a 2.83% decrease. This current year, it's at $1,012,400. A proposed number of $983,803. Anticipated income of $110,000 to be raised by taxes of $873,803 for a total of $983,803. Once again, a 2.82% decrease. The Highway Committee of Joey and Mary, anything to add to this budget before I go to Byron?
Only thing that we did, and we talked about this, is there are at least two different budgets that show stormwater monies, and we felt that we should put all the stormwater money into one line item because most stormwaters townwide doesn't just go with highway. So, that is part of the savings in the highway budget. We moved, that money was moved into the general account where, under that stormwater item. And I think that'll be easier for our town treasurer to track where all this stuff goes because it'll just be going to one place.
Okay, thanks for that, Joe. Mary, anything to add?
A couple of big changes. Culvert replacement went up from $15,000 to $70,000 because that includes the Leeson Road culvert, which we are hoping will last until the next fiscal year. But that's a large culvert and it needs to be replaced, and it's already beginning to show signs of failing. And that, that's $50,000 and the rest is smaller culverts. So, that's a fairly large item. A big decrease in sidewalk grant from $50,000 down to $3,500. And for engineering services, there's a decrease from $30,000 to $15,000. In the sidewalk grant, this is, we are, the $3,500 is our share of JP Sidewalk Soping Study. And the $15,000 under engineering services, remember, we have applied for a grant. And that's 2,500 of that would go towards Pocket Park Grant that we're working on. They're included in their money for the storage building up at Northwood Park. And $18,000 for the shared use pass for the engineering on that. So, that's what that is, but those figures are down from what we had projected last year.
Great.
Move to approve the highway budget.
Motion to approve by Mary, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Sharon. Hey Byron, I wanted to go to you, did anything you wanted to highlight in this budget before I called the vote?
Yes, the anticipated income. That's basically our regular state aid. And the legislature, when they passed the three-quarter year budget this last August, opted not to have any structures or paving grants, but instead, they increased the regular state aid by 7 million. So, how that is all going to get divided up amongst all the communities based on mileage and so forth. So, I anticipate that that's probably going to go up. Instead of being 110, you probably could bump it to 118. That's up to you, but I know that number will be going up.
So, we could leave it the way it is now and then use that extra income just to decrease taxes, right? Roll it back, oh, you would keep yours, you don't roll it back.
Right, we haven't had any letter from, usually, we get a letter from Beth Pierce stating what our regular state aid is going to be, we haven't received that yet.
What's the committee, what's the committee's pleasure?
Josh, that won't show up or affect, I mean, we won't know about that till whenever that comes in next year, and that would only affect tax rate. The budget itself won't change, it's just the amount we're going to have to ask for. We'll have to figure that when we do the tax rate in the summer.
We'll have that, you should have that number by that time.
Yeah, so, so the budget won't change, it's just the income portion of it might be greater, so the amount we ask for will just be less.
That's correct.
Got it. Mary, comfortable with that?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, all those in favor of the highway budget as presented, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Highway budget passes, thank you Byron and to the committee for your hard work on that.
And after the hard one.
Save the best for last, Byron, come on, what do you mean the hard one? Alright, take a peek at the general budget, should be three large pages. We have, we have some blanks here to fill in, so I can, I can jump down to the blanks, so we can get those filled in. John Paul, looks like we need a couple numbers from you on the health officer and then the second constable. Is that a 3% increase there as well?
So, for the health officer, I think we can reduce that to 7,500. And we can reduce the consultant to 1,500.
Okay.
On the constable, yeah, the rate would increase by whatever, the 3%, but looking at what we spent so far, and judging from the results, I think, which have been good for the one day a week, the constable should be increased to 18,000, and the vehicle should be increased to 3,500. And that should level fund for that level of service. We should be pretty close to on the money for that. But the health officer, I, I anticipate the health off, a further reduction in the health officer, it's just that one big case can go through a lot quite quickly. So, I think we should come down slow on that. But I've reduced it 50% going forward. I'm sorry, Joe, you...
I was just going to ask you, the money for the second constable, that'll allow you to work at least the one hour or one day a week or more if you needed?
That's one day a week extra in addition to the half day. So, that's a day and a half going forward.
Okay. I like seeing you out there, I don't mind spending more money.
Well, I do think we are getting results. And the last time I went out, the chief allowed me to use one of the cruisers, and that has a different effect on traffic, equally positive. So, I might be switching back and forth as we go forward, but that'll save on the constable vehicle expense.
I would, yeah, I would note that we also, the chief also swore JP in as a special town police officer so that he could drive that cruiser through the city and be able to stop people if they're in violation of road rules. There's no extra cost because of that, but it's extra flexibility on enforcement.
Right.
Okay. So, watch, watch your speeds in the city as well, right, folks?
You just can't get away from them.
So, I would move, I would move the acceptance of the health officer and constable budgets as presented.
Second.
Motion by John, second by Sharon. We could do it that way with a separate motion, or we can just continue through the general budget, John, and just approve the whole slate of changes.
Okay, sure, that's fine. We have the health officer supplies and second constable supplies at $100 each. Are those staying or are those changing?
Yeah, those, those will stay. I actually, there's a holster expense out of that supply line item, hasn't caught, yeah, that should stay. I think that's a fair estimate.
Okay.
Got it.
Yep. Okay, so that's the, those are the blanks on page one. We can come back and discuss the items that are filled in if you choose to, but let's go to page two.
I just have a quick question, Josh, on page one.
Yeah, go ahead, Joe.
At the transfer station, the punch tickets that are sold up there, and they generate quite a few dollars. Where does, you know, do folks realize that that goes back in? Does that go back into the general? So, it would just kind of offset some of the taxes we asked for, or where does that money go?
I believe that's figured into the, I think that's figured into the 150,000 anticipated income, but I'd have Carrie clarify that for us.
I can certainly look into that for you.
Okay, you know, I'd just like to make sure that that doesn't get lost somewhere. I don't think it does, but I've never seen where it's shown anywhere. You know, maybe in the town report, I would find it if I looked there.
We'll, we can get you an answer. Alright.
Josh, also under transfer stations, if you want to touch on that, there's a, a new line that wasn't in there before. It was in there but wasn't in there, which is the utility line. That's a, it's been there, but it hasn't shown up on the, it actually hasn't been on the town report before, but there is an account for it. So, there's been in the budget and expenses, so it's, we did add that in now to make sure it's there.
Okay, that's good to know.
And on page two, you'll see that we also, Larry requested that we separate out the amount that goes for paying for the food scraps pickup. We decreased the waste removal by 1,000, and we're anticipating the cost of stuff leaving the transfer station is going up because everything is. And then we added a new item, you'll see that on page two, which says food scraps, and that's 4,000, so it's like a $3,000 increase to the, the whole. to the, um, the whole getting rid of the waste.
Okay. Thanks for that explanation. Let's go to page two folks, it looks like most of it's.
Hold on Josh.
Yep.
Uh, Friday I got a little, I got a surprise Friday on the hazardous waste materials there. As of a month ago, they said things were, look fine, I could stay at the five thousand. When I got the bill Friday, it went up a little bit. So I'd like to change that line right there for hazardous waste from five thousand to six thousand.
So, uh, scratch out five thousand dollars on hazardous waste, pump in, uh, six thousand dollars please on that sheet bill.
Okay, would this be the time to bring up that container that we have to replace or would that be another meeting?
I think that container is going to come out of our, uh, capital improvement or depreciation account, right Larry?
Uh, I don't have to.
We, that leads to an interesting discussion Josh, we, Larry and myself and Bill and JP discussed this when we had our meeting and, um, we're thinking of, uh, asking the voters for an eighth of a cent depreciation fund for the equipment up there, that equipment is between twenty-five and thirty years old, we have six regular boxes and two of the compactor boxes, and we thought we would ask for an eighth of a cent depreciation fund with a fifty thousand dollar cap that would be specific for that equipment, um, and then we got to figure out if they can repair that box or if we'll have to replace it, because at this point, if we have to replace it, there are no funds available.
So why don't, uh, if the board's in agreement, why don't we put it on the agenda for next Tuesday night to discuss, uh, at length what the plan should be?
Well, actually, there's two things, two things, one would be this one eighth of a percent increase, the other thing is too, I think we have to buy that box this year and so there should be discussion about, um, taking the money out of, um, the capital fund to do that, right? We got two things we got to do.
Yeah, if we have to replace the box, we, I don't think Larry's got, um, a, a clear direction yet, he's going to have a couple of folks look at the damage one and see what the best choice is going to be.
Yes, I do have a clear direction right now, I've had Byron working with me on this and a couple other people. Uh, right now, if we had to repair that box, we're looking at a thousand dollars in, uh, metal, uh, it needs a new floor, which would be six hundred, it needs new rails on the bottom of it. And three to four days of labor, plus we'd be renting a welder, that, that would probably bring us around three thousand to thirty-five hundred dollars that we're going to put into a twenty-seven year old container. You walk in that container and you can see a lot of daylight, so the metal has been compromised for an old container. And talking with Byron, we think it'd be best if it was replaced. Are you still there Byron? I'm still here. Okay. Yeah.
Um, any idea on the cost of a replacement yet?
Yes, I do, uh. That, the container that we replaced that, it would be painted, taxes and shipping comes to seventy-three hundred dollars. It was cheaper than I thought it was going to be.
Yeah, but, yeah, almost, yeah, about half of what I thought. All right.
So that's what needs to go on the agenda for next meeting, right?
Yep, correct.
Okay.
That'd be fine.
So this is Mary, I know we've talked around a bit, so let me hop in, I'd like to address something on page one. I, I'd like to talk about an increase for the, uh, town clerk and town treasurer positions. Um, I do this knowing that when Carrie came on board, um, we had already budgeted for a, a fairly substantial amount of, for twenty-eight thousand five sixty-one for each position. And when she came on board, we basically told her, you're not going to get that much, and we cut her back, um, significantly, uh, from what was budgeted. Um, in my mind, I was going to review this July first and that came and went and I didn't, but I think it is time that we acknowledge, um, that we should be providing a pay increase to Carrie, uh, in these two positions. I would, I would suggest, and this probably is, I would suggest that we do a pay increase beginning January first, which would be in the current fiscal year, and then the increase, uh, three percent increase on top of her salary, whatever we decide to bump her up to going ahead in, um, July first for the next fiscal year. Um, Carrie came in, tackled COVID, she tackled all of the elections, very different kind of election, remembering that she handles millions of dollars in tax revenue, she handles all of our accounts receivable, she deals with the, everything from the land records to the dog licenses, and she supervises, um, another staff person, one full-time and one part-time staff person. And I think in recognition of all of the work that she is doing and the responsibility, she and Susan both have to be bonded, that I would propose that we increase, uh, town clerk and town treasurer positions. Um, and I don't have a particular number in mind, so I would, I, I've asked Carrie to think about it and I've asked her what she would recommend for an increase.
Well, before we do that, let me, uh, make clear that you have misrepresented what had happened with Carrie's salary. Your exact words were that we cut back significantly, there was no cutback when it came to Carrie. When we were looking at what to pay the town clerk, we had a range, and that range was from forty-seven five to somewhere in the fifties for both positions, depending upon experience and what was brought to the job. When we looked at Carrie, quite frankly, as much as I think the world of her, she didn't bring a lot of clerk skills to the office and to her benefit, she has done the job admirably. But for you to suggest that the rest of the board cut back is disingenuous at best, we placed her above what some thought she should get as a beginner town clerk. So there was no holding back when it came to Carrie, and as a matter of fact, I don't think Carrie would object to the, where she was started for her salary. Second, a point of order to a point that you yourself often complain about, this should go through the personnel committee. And then a recommendation can be made to the board, because there's a lot of criteria that have to go into deciding a motion like this, none of which we have when you ambush us with a personnel issue in open meeting like this.
JP, I really wish that words like disingenuous and ambush, um, would not be used in these meetings. I pointed out.
I really wish the conduct to which those terms apply wouldn't be engaged in.
I would like to finish please. The fact is, we had budgeted for the town clerk and town treasurer positions to be much higher, and anyone who ran for that position would be looking at a larger salary than what we ultimately ended up giving Carrie, and that was my point. So, um, and as to going to personnel, I was trying to move this budget, um, discussion along because it was a budget meeting that we were supposed to have tonight, and when I saw the figures, I thought it only appropriate to raise this now. If you think the issue of, um, what to pay the town clerk and treasurer should be held until the personnel committee can meet, I'm fine with that, but I think either we move all of the budget tonight, um, and that would include what my proposal is, or we say we're going to have to have a personnel committee meeting and then review those two items.
Further discussion on the matter, Sharon or John, or Sharon or Joey?
No, the only thing I'd like to say is, I, I do feel, but that if, if it's got to go to personnel, so be it, but I do support the increase, um, because she has stepped up to the plate. And especially to start out with no, no prior history of being a town clerk or treasurer, I think she's done, uh, an excellent job.
So, um, the only, the only thing I will add here is, we, Carrie came in at fifty-two thousand dollars in March when she won the election. In July, Carrie, uh, was also given, just like all town employees, the three percent raise, which got her to fifty-three five. So I just want everyone to understand the figures on here, this twenty-eight, if you're looking at the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one number of twenty-five sixty-one, uh, times two for clerk and treasurer, that would have been what was budgeted with the increases for Kirsten, uh, over the, what was Kirsten, about three, three years or so. So that's how that number had come to, come to be, and that's why on this sheet it's budgeted slightly down, uh, about a thousand dollars actually in each column, from what, um, Kirsten would have been at after the three years of, uh, service to the town. Does that make sense, what I'm saying?
No, I, I under. I understand where the figure came from, um, but sometimes when the job is actually being done at the level expected, you don't have to wait two or three years for seniority to kick, you, you recognize it. Um, so I would move that the issue of town clerk and treasurer salary be pulled from this discussion and sent to the personnel committee.
Second.
Motion, um, by Mary, second, uh, second by Sharon to send to the personnel committee, uh, for discussion. Um, I'm just getting you what the number would be at the proposed increase. So with the proposed three percent that we get, uh, Carrie to fifty-five, one oh five, the way, uh, the way it would sit right now. Uh, all those in favor to send the town clerk and treasurer salary discussion to personnel, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Uh, motion passes to send that discussion to personnel. Okay, we ready to move on to page two folks? Um, on page two, we had halfway down or so, there's a second constable line for, um, mileage. John, is that something you get paid out of, is that line there as well, or reimbursed from?
Yeah, correct, um, that's when I do a chore that I can attribute just the mileage, the vehicle expense is only charged when I have to keep my vehicle running.
So what's your proposal for that line?
Oh, that would be included in the earlier number.
Okay, so this would be left.
The thirty-five hundred.
So this would be left at zero?
Yes.
Okay. And then health officer at fif, five fifty, would that be zero as well?
Uh, no, the health officer you can reduce to like two hundred.
Okay, and then at the bottom of my sheet here, Bill wrote in, did everyone get the red marker here Bill, or is this just my copy?
That's just yours.
Okay, so Bill wrote on mine after the fact, if you're at the bottom under town planning and zoning, legal services of a thousand, regional commission of two thousand, planning commission of four thousand, miscellaneous of five hundred, and advertising zoning of two thousand dollars. And then it actually carries on to page three, the top one there of fees and zoning of five hundred dollars. So that would cover the, that would cover the blanks on page two. And then, um, on page three, we had pound keeper at five hundred dollars, and it's blank, is there a number that we'd like to put in there folks? Is that what we have, uh, John Paul, is that what we have Paul Williams on standby for, if we needed?
Correct.
So would it be appropriate? Just leave it at five hundred?
I would, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Down to VLCT dues, do we know what that is Bill and Carrie?
Uh, yes, it's, it's, uh, seven thousand would be appropriate number for that.
That's a win. Miscellaneous expense, um, we had at four thousand dollars, that's where we, uh, miscellaneous expense, we take, uh, flowers and gift baskets out of for those, you know, who, uh, close to the town or employees who lose a family member or have surgery and we send a meal to and things like that. Bill and Carrie, upon review of that, is four thousand the, the number there, do you think?
I would say that's appropriate.
Select board members, any thoughts on that?
That looks fine, I think there was something else in there, but I can't remember what it was.
Is that where the circle comes from?
No, there's another line for that.
There's a separate line.
Uh, July fourth, so, uh, July fourth fireworks, do we, do we see a contract from them again yet Bill with a discounted price?
No, but that should be coming in the next few weeks, because it's usually by the first of the year, around, around January, so.
Is the board comfortable leaving at seventy-five hundred dollars?
Yeah, I think so, they bumped it up last year, so I think maybe this year will be the same.
They, they did, and they said that where we, our, our projections were in line with what they were trying to get other towns to be at, to seek, to, to keep in line with, with the, uh, cost increases, so they said that was an appropriate number to be at.
Uh, townwide celebration, we obviously didn't do one this year because of COVID, hopefully by next July the town can do another one. What's the board's pleasure with that line item?
I think we should fund that at the twenty-five hundred, that would be appropriate if, if we can do it.
Okay. Dropping down to the bottom, Cheney Hills no longer the town of Rutland's, uh, concern in terms of payment or, uh, uh, costs?
Are we at a point where those three lines can come off now?
Yes, it's been three years, right? One, two, one, two, no, I don't think, this will be the third year I believe, so you got to leave it on one more year.
So we may also, if we drop the Cheney Hill, we should put the seniors, um, keep the seniors obviously, um, and I talked with Jim Hall, that because they have had no activity due to COVID really, um, he, and they have money in the bank, he proposes that we not fund the Rutland Town seniors this year and put in zero. Um, I want to make sure that we pick up funding in subsequent years, but he's okay with zero for this year.
Okay, on my end you cut out a little bit, Mary, what was the number you proposed?
Zero.
Zero, okay. Thank you. Uh, and then, uh, the, okay, miscellaneous contributions, the circle, what, Mary, you met with those folks, what, what are they thinking, any, any idea on costs?
Um, we're, we didn't look at the cost, I think forty-five hundred, um, would be appropriate because looking at the fiscal year ahead, um, we will be hopefully publishing all of the additions. We will have a possible bump up because we're going to ask the printer to do a little more of the work, um, but I think forty-five hundred is appropriate.
Okay. Very good, all right, so that gives us, Bill, where, where are we at here? Uh, so if you're following along at home folks and you have the worksheet, that would bring us to, uh, one million sixty-four thousand three hundred and forty-two dollars. So one, zero, six, four, three, four, two. Anticipated income of a hundred and fifty thousand, anticipated one percent tax of one million fifty thousand. And that would leave us, uh, to be raised by taxes an amount of one hundred thirty-five thousand six hundred and fifty-eight dollars.
That's a negative number.
A negative number.
Yes, it is a negative number, I'm sorry. Negative, yeah, and then, uh, three point two five percent budget increase. And there can't be a, there can't be a motion made on this because, uh, we're, there's some unsettled business it sounds like to discuss further. As the. As the, as the budget sits right now, go ahead, Byron, did you have something?
Yeah, I haven't discussed anything about stormwater.
If we miss this.
There is, there is a figure in stormwater, and it's to Joey's question earlier, do we combine stormwater expenditures, there's some under highway, there's some here under general. Um, we haven't really dealt with that question, we did raise the, it's part of the Highway Committee meeting.
Of that four thousand thousand that's on that line item, um, fifteen thousand of that's going to have to be committed to the, uh, Windmere, uh, uh, DEC grant retrofit project. Right, is that, that's, that will be coming out of next year's budget, not this, not the current budget, correct?
So I did get a list from Andres, and the two biggest, he has, this, this forty-one thousand comes from his scope of services for that fiscal year. He has the Nancy Lane Stormwater retrofit at fif- at fifteen thousand, and the Industrial Park Stormwater retrofit at fifteen thousand, those are matching grant, those are matching numbers, uh, for grants he, uh, says we should be eligible, eligible for and should be able to, to get, but he does not have Windmere in here. So I think, I think he's intending for that to come out of this current year.
Okay, yeah, that's out of that thirty thousand. Okay.
Yeah, there's thirty thousand this year, and I think that was, I think that was why, it was because it was supposed to be Windmere this year.
Okay, very good.
Bill, do you know how much has been spent of that thirty thousand?
Uh, I, I don't, I don't have all the expenditure for all, but Carrie, I think Carrie had the, I'm not sure if Carrie has the year-to-date budget sheets with her, but, uh, I don't know exactly how much has been out of there.
I can look.
Byron. I have a, Byron?
Yeah.
In our current, uh, highway budget, there's ten thousand under stormwater, um, do, do you have that spent for this year? Do you know where that's going in this fiscal budget?
Most of that would be going for, um, fees that we pay annually to, uh, to, uh, DEC, A and R, um, for their, for like the stormwater fund at the highway garage, there's an annual fee for that, there's an annual fee for Curtis Brook Road, there's an annual fee for the Windridge development. And going forward, there'll be annual fees for Windmere.
Okay, because in the, in the proposed budget, we dropped that to a thousand, and we need to just make sure we pick that up somewhere, and that would be in that, uh, stormwater under the general, I'm, I'm, I'm wondering if that forty-one's going to be enough, or if we need to increase that with all the stuff they keep dumping on us.
Most fees, I think, comes around fifteen hundred or two thousand dollars altogether.
Okay.
So I do have the figure, um, as far as what we've spent for stormwater right at the moment, was that something that someone's asking for?
Yes, please.
Yeah.
So currently, um, we've spent nine thousand three hundred and thirty-one dollars and some change.
Good, thank you.
Carrie, do you know, did, did that come out of the, this line item in the general account, or did it come out of the highway line item?
I'm looking at the general line item right now.
Okay, see, that, that's why the, the confusion bothers me and, and why we thought of proposing to put this all together, so it only, there's only one place for stormwater, and then we won't have to try to figure out where it comes from.
Do you need me to look in the highway one, too?
Um, I don't know if, yeah, you could, to see if we've spent any of that ten thousand on forty-five, zero, nine, six.
No, nothing's been spent yet.
Okay.
Those fees usually come around April or May.
And, and, do you think, Byron, would it, I mean, are those specifically highway-related items, or, or could we just put all this together and, and just have that one in the general that would, would just, it would all come out of there?
Put it all together if you'd like, but they are, Wind, uh, the Windridge is, uh, you know, the road drainage, that's that, there's a lot of structure up there, we have to weed whack every year and maintain. And then, uh, Curtis Brook is the same thing, now those are just grassline swales and that sort of thing, I think there's one culvert there, it's got to be cleaned. And then, uh, the highway garage, that stormwater pond.
Okay. I don't, I don't know what the rest of the board members are, I mean, we're, we're not really going to be spending any more money, it's just taking it out of one budget and putting it in another, just to make for easier bookkeeping and I think easier tracking.
So are there any, any numbers to change here, folks, in your opinions?
I'm good with putting it together.
Yeah, me too.
We just need to come up with a figure if that forty-one is going to be enough, I mean, we could theoretically reduce Byron's budget by a thousand, because we still have a thousand in there, and, and put that in with, uh, general, and maybe make that number forty-five, because it sounded like what Billy was saying, um, we're committed to like thirty grand, maybe forty-five grand right off the top here. Some of it will come out of this year, hopefully, and then going forward, we need to make sure we budget enough for that twenty-one, twenty-two year.
Yeah, the stormwater budget in, in the general budget is usually, comes from Andre's estimates. Um, and then the project that Byron does comes out of his, so we, we certainly can combine them, and that may make it easier just to make sure we're all under one bucket, but that, that forty-one thousand figure is directly from Andre's estimate, so that, like you said, Joe, that, that kind of commits that, and I, I agree, that, that's his, his scope of, of estimate, that's, that's nothing extra for anywhere else in the, in the town.
Right, because we had forty thousand basically in the two budgets for this fiscal, fiscal year, um, budgeted, and then with these other projects, we just want to make sure that we try to make sure we have enough going to cover everything, um.
So I propose we zero out the highway stormwater figure and add a thousand dollars to the proposed stormwater general budget, so that would bring it to forty-two thousand.
Second.
Motion by Mary, second by Sharon, to, per discussion, we zero out the highway budget. Uh, add the thousand dollars on the highway budget, which changes all those numbers, so Bill, you can update that if the vote passes, right?
Yep.
We'd increase stormwater by forty-two, or by a thousand to make it forty-two thousand in the, uh-
I, I have a concern that that might be cutting it a little close, because there's like twenty-five hundred, I think the numbers Byron talked about for those three different, uh, fees we have to pay every year.
Yeah.
So what do you-
So that number might, I don't know if that number might need to be a little more than forty-two.
I think Joe's original, when he said forty-five, that's, that's exactly what I was thinking.
I think that's where we need to be.
Mary, would you may, uh, would you feel comfortable forty-five altering your motion, or would you like to vote on the forty-two?
No, I mean, I'm, I'm curious to hear from Byron, because we had one thousand in, and in his budget, and now it sounds like more is needed, so what does Byron think?
Uh, the only, the only fees that I've been paying, like I said, are for the highway garage, Windmere, and Curtis Brook. And Curtis Brook is, I don't know, a couple hundred dollars, and Windmere, I think is five or six, and the highway garage is around six. I mean, somewhere around fifteen hundred dollars probably, um, that I've been paying.
And then we're going to be, and, and if we take over that thing, the other one would have a little more, so I think we need to just make sure there's enough in there.
But don't forget that, that, then there's the annual fee, or it has to do with, with stormwater, I guess, but it's the road erosion inventory stuff that we do, there's an annual fee that's paid to DEC for that. And that's over six hundred dollars for that, so that's pushing you back up toward that two thousand dollar mark, just, just for those, those two things, those fees come every April or May.
So that would put us at at least forty-three, so I, I don't think the forty-five would be out of line.
Come on, once all of that is in one bucket, you can adjust it in another year.
Yeah.
Alright, so let's move that from forty-two to forty-five thousand dollars in the general.
And we'll zero it out of Byron's.
Alright.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, so was there anything else in the general, folks, to discuss at this time?
Um, I have a question just above where we were talking stormwater, the municipal office building, um, I'd like to ask the Building Committee what, um, it went from twenty-eight thousand last year up to forty thousand, which is still way below the sixty-seven thousand, so I'm curious to know what, um, projects they may have planned for this year.
Yep, uh, Joe, did you want to discuss that?
I can, um, we took a look at, Mary, the, uh, what the, um, yearly cost for, uh, stuff that comes out of the maintenance budget, like lawn mowing, uh, the cleaning services and various things, um, came up with a number there, and what we were proposing is to try to look at, uh, the remodel of downstairs and the, uh, voting space and, and come up with some plans that we could move forward with and propose to the taxpayers on remodeling downstairs, so we're going to need to get somebody in there to come up, whether we do an architect or we do a committee, but, um, we wanted to have some money available to start that project, um, going forward, and, and in future years, part of a five-year plan would be to do a complete remodel of the downstairs.
Okay, thanks.
Josh, I had something else for the, under the municipal office building that we had discussed, was the, um, cemetery next door, we, we don't have anything technically allocated for that, and um, in talking with Tom Giffen from the Vermont Old Cemetery Association, uh, who's offered to do some work for us, we are in reality supposed to have a fence that goes around the entire part of the property. So we don't need to do that right away, but, um, that is something we need to look at, plus there is some maintenance there that does need to be done, more than just mowing the lawn.
Um, okay, where were we on that, uh, what page, uh, Bill?
There, well, there is no line for it, so I was, I was thinking it would go under the municipal office building, um, just part of that group, but there's, there is no line for it, there's no, it, it'd be a new line, uh, on the, on the budget.
Do we want to discuss that tonight, folks? We got some time to think about it, since we have to discuss other matters, this isn't going to be finalized tonight.
And what would we be thinking, um, separating out maybe some of the cost for mowing and maintenance, and then kind of get an idea on a fence, the fence would be a one-time expense.
It would be, yeah, and I've talked to one person already, and they've, they, they've said that they can be accommodate, so help, help us on the, on the pricing a little bit, but we need to make some decisions kind of about where we want to go with that, but, um, there's um, some, some stuff in there that needs to come out, there's some, a, a little bit of excavating, some of the trees need to be pruned or take, there's some that need to come down, so there, there's some work in there, but once it's done, it's, it's, it's mainly just lawn maintenance, but we've got to take some bushes out, we've got to, uh, there actually are some more headstones we found, uh, over to the railroad tracks that are, um, broken and lying on the ground, so there is some work to do, but, um, it's just, we don't, we don't, we, we pay for the lawn mowing out of the building maintenance, which is, which is fine, uh, but that way, there, we, the, um, also, Tom, it's had pointed me in the direction of some, um, chemicals that can help clean the stones, so, you know, that'd be, they're about, about two hundred dollars to purchase those, so just some things like that, that would allow some, some volunteer groups also to come in and help us with the maintenance as well.
Well, why don't we put it on the agenda for next week to discuss further?
Sure.
Is that alright, folks?
Yep, sounds good.
Yeah.
Okay, is there any further discussion on the general, uh, worksheet?
No, I think we did a pretty good job.
Yeah, a question for, um, for the county tax, do we have that, a firm number on that, it looks like it's going from seventy-two up to eighty, that's out of our control, but I'm just wondering if the, uh, side judges have actually set the amount yet.
So they, I haven't had a chance to call them, Mary, um, I, I just wanted to explain that, um, line really quickly, I'm glad that you said something. Um, we looked at the previous years, um, and the increase roughly on the previous years from each year, and it was around five hun- uh, five thousand dollars, and of course, that's based on the city's grant list, kind of like what we do. Um, so I can still give them a call and see when that actual figure is coming, um, but I did want to note that, um, for this year, we, um, the budget was asking for seventy-two thousand, and the actual number right now that we paid this year was seventy-three, seven fifteen, um, so we did the increase based on that number and gave it a little wiggle room in case it was more than, um, the, the anticipated. So that's why the eighty is there.
Okay, thanks, Carrie.
You're welcome.
Okay, folks, uh, I'll go around the horn here, uh, John Paul, anything for the board?
All set.
Sharon? Joe?
Um, is there anything else we had to discuss as far as, what about that, uh, contract with the, um, uh, Fire District, was that something we're going to do at the next board meeting, or are we going to talk about that tonight? It needed to be cleaned up, and then we needed to vote on it.
I sent it to Kevin, I have not gotten it back yet.
Okay, so we aren't talking about that tonight.
Um, Mary, anything further?
Uh, no, thank you.
Anything from any department heads that we missed?
I think I'm all set.
Alright, thank you, folks, appreciate it, we'll, uh, we will see you next, uh, next Tuesday night. Uh, we need a motion to adjourn.
Almost.
Motion by Joe, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mary, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any votes? Motion passes, goodnight, everyone.